Okay, we'll bring this meeting to order for the council workshop for May 2nd, 2023. Please rise for the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Please note for the records that Mayor McCullough is not in attendance tonight. Deputy Mayor Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton?
Here.
Councilmember McLehman?
Here.
Councilmember Swatman?
Present.
And Councilmember Watson?
Here.
All right, moving on, we have two proclamations that I will read into the record. This is the National Public Works Week, May 21st through 27th, 2023. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and reliant and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Bonnie Lake. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are responsible for the maintenance, operations, planning, design, and construction of streets, transportation facilities, water, and sewer facilities, public buildings, parks, trails, and open space. And whereas, public works professionals are always first responders in times of natural disasters and other emergencies that impact the city. And whereas, the 2023 National Public Works Week theme is connecting the world through public works, which highlights the way public works professionals connect us physically through infrastructure and inspirationally through service to their communities, whether as first responders or daily workers carrying out their duties with pride. Now, therefore, says I, Michael McCullough, Mayor of the City of Bonnie Lake, do hereby proclaim, May 17th through 23rd, 2023, as National Public Works Week. Right. And then we have a proclamation for Drinking Water Week, May 7th through 13th, 2023. Whereas, water is our most valuable natural resource. And whereas, tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas, any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth, and diversity, productivity, and public safety are in some way related to access to safe water. And whereas, we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend. And whereas, each citizen of our city is called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in water, local water issues by getting to know their water. Now, therefore, I, Michael McCullough, Mayor of the City of Bonnie Lake, do proclaim the week of May 7th through May 13th, 2023, as Drinking Water Week. All right. Well, we'll move on to council open discussion. Do you have anything? Councilmember Watson?
Go first.
Thanks, Member Baldwin.
I just wanted to announce that this coming Thursday is the Pierce County Law Enforcement Memorial, and it is at 6:00 PM at Bethany Baptist Church in Puyallup.
Awesome, thank you. Councilmember Evans?
I just wanted to announce that on Friday, Cinco de Mayo, the Bonnie Lake Food Bank will be hosting a charity event at Kelly Farms. It's 21 and over, food trucks, taco trucks, things like that. A Eagles tribute band will be there as well. I believe it's six to ten?
Believe so.
Something like that, yeah. So it should be a fun time. Goes to a great organization.
Great, thank you.
You said this Friday?
Yeah.
I bought tickets in advance.
I saw that, okay.
Councilmember Watson?
Thank you, appreciate it, Mr. Carter. Got a letter from Cherry Reed. He's on our Conservation Futures Committee Advisory Board. Tom, this is my second final term on the board in June. Next cycle application starts in July. It's time for the city to find a replacement. Be great to have someone well-versed in parks and trails. Do you have any suggestions who might want to be on this? As you probably know, this person needs to be recommended by the mayor and then appointed by the council. Let me know how you want to move forward with this. And I looked it up online today, and the Conservation Futures Open Space Citizens Advisory Board, C A B, is comprised of 17 individuals who represent a broad interest in Pierce County. The C A B evaluate property presentations that may be eligible for acquisition through the conservation funds. Presentations are made in public meetings in a meeting forum. And they were at a key point in our trail, Victor Falls and stuff. So that's where I met him last down there. So that's something we should bring forward in the future if anyone's interested in that. Right now, I'm not interested, but just sort of bring it forward for you. Don't look at me. The other thing I always want to just talk about is that we have a lot of things in the community events that we've done recently. We had our Parks Appreciation Day. We had a lot of citizens there. We had Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts there. We had a couple of people from a sports team, citizens there. Mr. Evans, myself, were there, and we had a really good time walking around, cleaning things up. And we're the only councilmembers there, talking to people, letting them know what they thought about the park. And just having conversation with citizens out there was really informative and helpful. Mr. Wells did a great job putting it together. The parks department were down there clicking, picking things up. So I really enjoyed the event, and hopefully in the future, somebody could be able to partake in that. You know, it's like the open house, the library, I think. Myself and Mr. Fullerton were the only two that were down there. And I talked to people at the library and walked around, how you like it? They loved the new library, what it's set up, really enjoyed it. And like, they enjoyed talking to me and stuff. So those type of things go on, you know, that would help us get, bring information back when you're out seeing the community and stuff, in my opinion, obviously. And you're aware that I was down at the Easter egg hunt. And that, that's huge for our city, that we have 500 kids that were down there, which include parents, grandparents, and family. And this year, as I mentioned before, they all lined up to come by the stage, and I handed as I could, a bucket, and said hi to them and talked to them. Other people helped out, too. But what an opportunity you could have had just beforehand, talking to citizens, what do you think about this? Should we do stuff? It's a great way to interact with what's going on. So I enjoy doing it. I like seeing more people out there when I'm doing these type of things to help understand what they want in our parks, our libraries, you know, clean up Midtown Park. Great thing, we talked to this one lady, we walked the whole exercise trail when they're out there. And Justin and I talked to her, ideas and thoughts and stuff. And Beautify Bonnie Lake has just bought new signs for exercise points there, so they're all going to go back up, get it back into shape. There's so much out there. But other than just talking to our neighbors, I think it's a great way to see the people throughout the whole community out there. And this year, BBL is separating the 20th year anniversary. We're trying to come up with a big project for that, not myself, but other people on the board. And we're talking about doing something over in the corner along with the city putting something there to celebrate 20 years and something, talk about beautify Bonnie Lake. But it's all in, very in the planning stages right now, nothing is concrete. So there's a lot out there going on, so I'm just informing you how. I enjoy it anyway.
Anything in the corner of veterans in 410?
Right. Right now, stuff with the veteran community, veterans, to me, and they, they're not meeting them regular time now, so we talked about a couple of things. And John, I have some ideas that we bring, make it easy for us to do, also celebrate beautify Bonnie Lake all these years and stuff, and our people that come to it. That's all I got, I'm good.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Fullerton?
Yeah, so at the last council meeting last week, I brought up the question about the sprinkler system code that we have in Bonnie Lake, and it was under, but we'd spoken about it several times. So I just was wondering if that's something that we are going to bring to the table to remove that code of the requirement for the new homes that are being built in Bonnie Lake, that they are required to put in a sprinkler system if they're X amount of square feet. We had talked about removing that, and then everybody was like, oh, I don't remember talking about that. And I'm like, I'm pretty sure we've been talking about that for about a year, so.
Councilmember Watson?
I'd have a comment. Talking to staff, I thought that really was, that was never an issue in the past, it's just been always there, and they ever had to address that. So I didn't see, is there a need to have it changed? What's?
Do we remember, do we remember last year when the gentleman came that had the issue where he had to pay $25,000 to dig a ditch to the street to get to his home so that he could get the proper amount of pressure in order to be able to install the proper
Is that all from there?
Fire sprinkler, which ended up being an issue because it was the wording, and they weren't allowing certain sprinkler systems, and then they decided to allow certain sprinklers. I'm just saying, you can have, everybody, anybody can have sprinkler systems, but to have it be a requirement to build a new home, I think that's a little excessive, and it's not a requirement in the state. And Bonnie Lake, as far as I know, is one of the only cities that actually has it as a requirement. And, you know, it was brought to my attention that it could save like about 20% on your homeowner's insurance, but that, so we'll say maybe that's $100 a year that you're going to save in your homeowner's insurance. However, in order to keep your homeowner's insurance up to date, you have to have those sprinklers inspected every single year to keep them certified, which costs about $150 to $200, depending on which sprinkler system you have. So now you're out-of-pocket money just to certify your sprinkler system, so you're really not saving any money on your homeowner's. And it also prevents people from being able to remodel their homes and make them a certain size, because if you exceed the square footage, then you have to add a sprinkler system to your home in order to be able to expand your home and add on to your house if you exceed the square footage that is in our requirements. So, and that, that's, you know, could be thousands and thousands of dollars if you have to add a sprinkler system to your whole entire house just because you want to add a spare bedroom, you know? So it's, it's a burden to people that are wanting to add on or that are wanting to build, because every thousand dollars that you have to spend in a difference when you're, when you're buying your first home, that can make or break whether you can afford that house or not. So to be required to put in a sprinkler system when you're trying to build a new home, that can mean that you can't afford to build here. So, you know, it's fine if people want to have it, but it shouldn't be a requirement where people are forced to purchase a sprinkler system just because they want to build a new home and it exceeds a certain square footage, so that's.
We went through all that years when we brought that forward, made that part of it, so.
I'm guessing he has a reply as to what we did, because I think we spoke about the type of, the type of system essentially that was, you were able to use, that might have got changed, but I don't know the status, if they were working through CDC or something.
Yeah, no, they did. We changed the language to allow, you know, more flexibility, because the guy was talking about that one situation, so that he could put in the different types and different things that they were dealing with.
Yeah, but that was, that was just one of the issues, because they didn't allow certain types of sprinkler systems. And then they were like, okay, well, we can have those, but by then, the guy's already spent $25,000, you know, upgrading to the system that he was required to have because of the wording that was in the, that was in the code. But the sprinkler systems were brought to council years ago on the premise that it was going to actually save people money. It would save their home, or it would save money because they're going to be able to get a discount on their homeowner's insurance.
The way I recall it was framed as a life-saving thing.
Yeah.
At that point in time, the fire department thought it was a good idea, and it was presented as a possibility, and they, you know, looked at the data, and it was like, oh, yeah, okay, it makes sense.
Well, and that's fine, but to make it a requirement and put it into code is, is a little excessive, I think.
Johnson, did you have a reply? I thought you looked like you were going to speak a little bit ago.
System that we were currently allowing, a thank you at that time. Let me step back just a little bit. And so we did resolve that at that time with that. The other point I wanted to clarify is just adding a bedroom onto a home is not going to trigger the requirement for sprinklers. The requirement for sprinklers during a remodel is actually triggered by either the value of the remodel or the square footage. It needs to be 50% or greater of the original structure, as far as I understand it, basically, clarify if I'm wrong. In order to install the sprinkler systems on a remodel, all new single-family construction at this point code mandates that they have a sprinkler system installed. So that was all I was going to add.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Baldwin?
As far as I remember, these conversations were sparked as a result of conversations we were having with the Master Builders Association. And we had extensive conversations with a few of them in regards to the fire sprinklers. And so I just wanted to say what they had stated, their position. Yeah, they do not support mandating fire sprinklers in single-family homes because they believe fire safety can be effectively provided without mandating costly fire sprinkler systems. And this is some of the things they were talking to us about in regards to the cost versus what it's actually doing. And so it said newer homes are built to a series of building codes explicitly designed to make homes safer with specificity on fire safety. And then they go on to say that we believe that requiring smoke alarms, including efforts to retrofit older structures, and educating the public on the importance of keeping these alarms working, offers the most cost-effective protection from fire-related deaths. In fact, of all the fire safety tools available today, installing and maintaining smoke alarms is the most practical and proven way to reduce home fatalities in the U.S. And so that was their biggest conversation with us, an argument against the fire sprinklers, is they were saying that as much as it costs, it is not as effective as educating the public in having smoke alarms. And so that's where our conversations were going in regards to why they were saying we should not mandate that. That is the conversations that I remember.
Right, yeah. And I think I agree, I remember that part of that conversation, but you know, that's of course the building community representing that.
Right, right.
The, there's, like, Councilmember Watson talked about, there's a lot of history behind the whole thing, right? It's not, it's not an insignificant discussion by any means. And there's some new data out from different sources that kind of like, basically.
Negate that?
They demonstrate, the data actually is very concise, that, you know, the fire sprinklers provide an incredible value, and they are expensive, but, and it does add to the cost. So, you know, you got to decide on whether you want to build cheap or you want to save lives, really, is what it amounts to. And if it's, if it's not worth a couple of thousand dollars to put a system in the house, and, you know, you're okay with, you know, people dying because you made that choice, because nobody's going to come along and put it in later, right? That's one of the key weirdities about fire sprinkler systems, is you don't get a second chance, you know? It's, it's there, and you, as a homeowner, should be able to choose whether you want to have, whatever you want to have. Unfortunately, there's a lot of regulations that don't allow us to choose many things now.
But this is a requirement in Bonnie Lake, and it's the only city that has that requirement.
Well, no, it's not, not even close. There's a lot of cities around the day.
Our county.
But the, it's one of those things, so if, hopefully it's a, becomes some kind of a significant, like, effort over a period of time, because I can guarantee you, if you actually look at the data, you know, the data, the actual real-world data doesn't hold out to, like, an insignificant benefit for fire sprinkler systems.
Sorry, Councilmember Evans?
Maybe my system doesn't require, or maybe I'm just ignorant and I don't have it tested annually? Is, I have a newer home with a fire sprinkler system in it, but I've never had it tested. I don't know that I needed to, is that?
Because it was probably a blow-through, it's kind, there isn't really.
Yeah, okay. So it's something I should look into, I guess.
Yeah, from, from the staff perspective, I'm not sure we're really the experts on what's required after somebody owns the sprinkler system. So I couldn't coach you on what you should be.
I know, only supposed to test it for yard sprinkler systems. That way the water's not going back into the.
Yeah, backflow, yeah.
Those house ones are closed off. Not going to have any backflow problems. Gardens are a problem with it, when your sprinkler turns on, you have a problem of backflow going in the system. That's what would be required, far as I know, annually.
And my, my second thing is, I'm a former firefighter, and certainly we have a professional that's outranks anything I ever had on my sleeves. But according to the NFPA, the National Fire Protection Agency, sprinklers reduce the rate of civilian fire deaths by 87% and reduce injuries by 27%. And they're much more accurate than smoke detectors. I don't know how many of you have been in houses and you hear that beep every, you know, 45 seconds, because they don't change their batteries when they're supposed to during, you know, time changes, that's, that sort of stuff. So as far as a safety standpoint, smoke detectors may work, but if we're looking at, why don't we just use smoke detectors in Walmart or Starbucks or other things? We require it there because it does save lives, and, and like I said, I don't think my system has that annual requirement where it does save me several hundred dollars a year on, on that cost, on my, on my insurance. So I just have to provide them that certificate every year that I still have one, but that's just my two cents.
Councilmember Baldwin?
I'll add a third sense. I would be curious to see that data, because, you know, I think when it comes to data, I always question data. It's just the science in me, and so I would be curious to see that data. Yeah, I would be interested in seeing that.
There, there happens to be a new NFPA report out, and it is, of course, you know, you got to take it with a grain of salt, right? But it is, the NFPA, they're not exactly.
Associated with.
Directly, but they're still, their, their interest is fire protection, but it just came out in '22, and it's pretty dramatic, the, and like I said, it's a choice, clearly, you know? People should have choices. I just worry about the next homeowner that comes along, because the next homeowner is not going to have that choice. They're not going to be able to say, oh, I, I want to put fire sprinklers in, because then it is going to be impractical.
Well, unless they remodeled their house to a certain square footage.
Greater than 50%. If you're increasing your house over 50.
On a 2,400 square foot house, that's an additional 1,200 square feet or more.
Yeah, you're spending money there.
There's going to be a lot around here that can put that much extra space on it.
I think it's worth a discussion in the future.
Sure. Councilmember McLehman?
So 2016 had a tree fall on my house. And the insurance adjuster from Colorado came out, because it was during a windstorm, so they brought in all sorts of people, right? The insurance adjuster's like, hey, oh, by the way, if they try to make you put sprinklers in, don't do it, because we have more claims on sprinklers going off and causing damage than anything else. So then, you know, I, I didn't really, I thought, that's just the adjuster just telling stuff, but, but actually what happened was, we did remodel, we did add right up to 49.999% because we avoided, well, I don't have a three-car garage now. I have like a two and three-quarters car garage. Because another couple of feet that was needed for the third garage door put me over the 50%, right? I mean, there was a lot of work there. We didn't do everything we wanted to do. I mean, it was, it's a real impact of people remodeling, because I only had like, I started off with like a 1,500 square foot house, right? And so now you can add on one another 700 feet, so now I do have that 2,400 square foot house. But, so, you know, I bet, I was impacted by this, and I, I did a lot of research in the Bonnie Lake City Code about it, and then, and then I thought back, when we were doing this, I'm like, really, do I care? Do I, do I care, do I not care? And there's a lot of different ways you do care, because the contractor wouldn't tell me how much it cost until I had my bucket test, because they were worried that this, I was in an older neighborhood with the wrong size main all the way to the house. So, you know, he's like, really, we're going to budget $25,000, right? So this was 2016, for that in the house, right? And I'm like, holy smoke, so it wasn't just a couple thousand, and it's $25,000 is what he put on the estimate, right, for the sprinklers. And part of it was an updated weight main, right, to the house to make sure you could pass the bucket test, and the additional, you know, work to put it all in and do the design and all that stuff. So it wasn't cheap. We wound up, that forced us to the, you know, 49.999%. So it is, it will happen. I can't be the only one that happened to, right? And I, again, then like Councilmember Baldwin said, I'd really kind of like to see the data. That's NFPA data, is that where that's coming from?
Yep, it's in your inbox right now.
Oh, perfect. I will go look at that, thank you.
Him and Justin, they're all.
That's all I have.
They're all over it.
Thank you.
Which is kind of interesting, too, because like you say, you know, all the regulatory things that we do are very interesting, plus or minuses, because I thought when I was reading it, I was like, yeah, you know, it's a plus or minus. But one, you know, you have the thing, and it's like, the rate of firefighter injuries per home fire with sprinklers, 78% lower, you know? And then, you know, part of our discussion here is about the cost and the homeowner and stuff like that. So there's a lot of factors that go into all that type of stuff, so you have to look at the whole gamut of what the cost is and everything. Because, yeah, you know, individual homeowners that are doing large upgrades like you described, yeah, it's a problem, right? Maybe there's a carve-out kind of thing for some, you know, when you're doing additions or something. But in a new home, you can guarantee that it is hardly no cost whatsoever, because it is like a no-brainer, in a new home. It is like one of the lowest-cost, probably highest-safety kind of items that you could put in a home. It's not like it was when, you know, I was young and you had to have hard pipes and all this kind of stuff. It's all part of that tech plumbing, it's part of your plumbing, and it's just, it's in there.
It sounds like it would be a good discussion item for a later meeting, that we could actually put it on an agenda a little later. Sadie? Thank you. Any other open discussion? Okay, move on to review of council minutes. Councilmember Watson?
They're good.
Fullerton? Awesome. Thank you. We'll move on to presentations. The first one is the fire presentation, so Chief Parkinson.
You know, fire.
Great.
How ironic.
Edgewood wanted to talk about fireworks, I'm not sure what you're going to say.
Fireworks, usually.
We can talk about fireworks.
Well, thank you for having me out. For those of you who I haven't met, I'm John Parkinson, the fire chief of Pierce Fire and Rescue. So tonight, I'm just going to give you an overview of who we are, what's, what's been going on, and where we're headed. It takes about 10, 15 minutes, I'll talk as fast as I can, I've got it down to auctioneer speed, so. Third up, so I've done this a few times now, so. Anyway, so a brief overview, if you don't know who we are, so East Pierce Fire and Rescue covers the cities of Milton, Edgewood, Sumner, Bonnie Lake, South Prairie by contract, completely encircle Lake Taft, Albemarle, Prairie Ridge communities, as well as Taha Lee. And then we go all the way out, we completely encircle Wilkerson, Carbonado, all the way out to the Maualish National Park. So, backwards, right this way. So in there, that's 100,000 people or just over, 153 square miles. In 2022, we ran 12,653 incidents, but firefighters like to travel in gangs, and so we always send more than one resource typically. So that means last year, we had just under 30,000 units rolling down the road on any response to those 12,000 incidents. Far as governance goes, just like you, we have an elected body, so we have seven elected fire commissioners, they're appointed to six-year term. Just like you, they set policy for the district as well as adopt budget. For 2023, as far as what we look like, so we have 183 budget authorized positions, those are folks that are on the payroll. We sunset our volunteer program at the end of 2022, had five folks. So all of those are full-time employees now. By the end of 2023, we'll have seven stations open, as we open up the facility in Milton, start staffing that station also. That'll have six-engine companies, ladder truck, four medic units, a battalion chief, and a medical services officer on duty 24/7/65, so 31 personnel on duty at all times by the end of 2023. As far as what our finances look like, so what you see up or on your screen is our revenue budget. So for 2023, our total. So for twenty twenty-three, our total revenue budget is just under forty-four million. You'll see the breakout there, and I'll go a little bit more into property property tax in the coming slides here, but the overwhelming majority of our funding comes through local property taxes. Next to that then is medical transport, so that's as we bill insurance, Medicaid or Medicare. We never bill residents directly, we bill your insurance, whatever they pay, they pay, and we do not collect any balance. People that live outside the district who are passing through, if we transport them, we do balance bill them, so that's a pretty small group of folks. Next to that, then we have safer grant, which is making a percent of our revenue budget, I'll talk about that later. And then everything else is in that quarter percent. As far as expenditures go for twenty twenty-three, we break out into five key functional areas of our operations, so the operations section being the largest, so that's booth on the ground, sixty-eight percent of the budget. We've got a fire prevention team, that's three percent logistics, so they're in charge of fleet and facility, making things, making sure things are ready to go down the road. Properly EMS division comes in at seven percent, and administration, myself, HR, finance, whatnot, makes up just over six percent. Then you'll see another slice of the pie, which is an equipment line, so that's new for us with new policy that was adopted by the board to start allocating money annually for a fifteen-year forecasted replacement of equipment. I'll talk about the bond here in a second, but the the bond that we just went out for a few years ago was to have to also replace some of our fire engines and medic units, so this is to ensure that in the future, we don't have to go back out to bond for that type of those kind of items. Making the bonds, so back in November twenty eighteen, we passed the eighty-million-dollar bond that was funded by fire stations, so for replacement of new stations, as well as some equipment. So we sold the first half of those bonds back in November twenty eighteen. What you see up on the screen, the top corner is the Edgewood Fire Station. That is near completion, it'll reach substantial completion this month, and hopefully be in service by late June. So again, that one's in Edgewood, so that's the first station. Next one below that is rendering of the Bonnie Lake Headquarters Station that you see across the street. Making really good progress, very happy with that builder over there. We expect to be about this time next year that we're occupying, and so I know the police are packing our bags for us trying to do this. So some other things that then we've got our.
By the door.
Yeah, they come in with measuring tapes. Our our facility that's on West Lake Tap, Station one fourteen, it's in the demolition, it's right now. Our facility out in Tohale should break ground midsummer. It'll be a sister station to the top station, so two of the stations we were able to reuse the plans for in two different areas, so that's the design and engineering costs there, so. So back on to bonds, back in July, we sold the second half as we're starting to burn through that that first half of bonds. If you remember what interest rates were doing last spring versus what they're doing now, our plan was to sell them in December of twenty-two. We decided to execute the sale back in the summer to try to capture low interest rates there. So did that. In doing so, if we had waited and gone with our original plan and sold it in December, we ended up reducing a couple of things. We were able to, by selling in July, shorten the repayment term by four years, so now that second set of terms is the second set of bonds is aligned with the first set. But they'll time out in sixteen years from now, and that also eliminated over fourteen million dollars in interest had we waited till December. As far as what our property tax, if you remember, that was just over eighty percent of our revenue, so what that looks like for us comes from two main sources and then the bond. So we, our two levies that we run, our regular levy or our fire levy, that currently sits at just over a dollar and eight cents. EMS levy at twenty-three cents, and then our bond currently is coming in at just over eighteen cents, and that's a whole eighty million dollars. Originally, the bond was marketed at twenty-five cents per thousand, so coming in well under that, a lot of that is obviously the the rise in AV that we see. Few core documents that we have that I'll speak about, last year I talked about our strategic plan that was newly adopted at that point. So core document that focuses on personnel development, population growth and demand, community relations and organizational efficiencies. That was adopted for twenty twenty-one through twenty-five. Staff has been making tremendous strides on that, we expect to actually finish a year early, so we're going to start working on its replacement for adoption in twenty twenty-four and so forth. End up having a new plan that runs from twenty twenty-five on then. Standard to cover was a study that we just finished back in January and was adopted by the board. So this was about a nine-year process of taking a look at a couple of different things. It was first taking a look at community risks, so evaluating what goes on in each of our communities, the differences between the industrial areas of Sumner and the residential area like Tohale. And making sure that we're actually deploying our units properly and can be better than we are today. So that led the board to make some, opposite different goals on what they want to see as far as service levels. And also then gave staff direction to start working on refining how we send units out the door on those. And then last item, our core document, capital facilities plan, this was adopted back in twenty eighteen and addresses all the different facility needs that we currently have. So phase one is covered by the eighty-million-dollar bond, that covers the five stations that are listed up there. Phase two, which is what we're in the planning for right now, as we start to see kind of the sunset of this build phase, start working through those four next facilities on there, so that's the Sumner Station, the Foothill Station out on two thirty-four. New station up in Milton, as well as a remodel to Station one fifteen on the east side of Lake Taps. That is not a funded phase, but so that's part of what Planning Committee for us is working on is the cleaning up the scope of those projects and updating budget numbers. So specifically, what happened in Bonnie Lake in twenty twenty-two, so what you see up on the screen, it had two thousand seven hundred and seven incidents. Sometimes we report this in a couple of different ways, so we have what we call a first due area of your Bonnie Lake Fire Station, which extends out beyond the city limits in different directions, but then the the numbers that you see on the screen are specific to just the city boundaries. So the overwhelming majority of our incidents across the district, over three-quarters are always medical in nature. Underneath that are service calls or false alarms, those could be to assist somebody fallen, but it's not injured or a fire alarm that has gone off that needs to be reset. The last three and a half percent is a combination of a couple of things, it's a blending of fire and hazardous materials calls. So hazardous materials most likely in this community is something like a carbon monoxide alarm or potentially like a natural gas leak or smell of natural gas. So with those two thousand seven hundred and seven incidents, that means just over six thousand unit responses occurred in the city of Bonnie Lake. As far as our travel time, so from the time we get in the rig and step on the gas pedal to the time we set the air brake in front of your house, at the ninetieth percentile or ninety percent of the time, we're eight minutes and five seconds or better. Then on average, we're coming in at four minutes thirty seconds. A couple of graphs that you see on there, the top one is hour of day chart, that's common as far as what we would see across the fire service period, would be that during the daytime hours, we're going to be busy and then overnight things settle down, so two-thirds of our incidents occur between eight AM and eight PM, and then the other third after after hours. Then the day of the week, not too unusual that we start to see a peak on Monday as our busy day. If you think about the the majority of our incidents being medical in nature, and your access into the medical system over the weekend can be a little bit difficult, so people tough it out over the weekend, and then they give us a call on Monday to go see their doctor or go to the hospital, so not not unusual. So as far as twenty twenty-two highlights, and this is the shortlist, I promise you, and so I'll zip through this. So starting off, I spoke about revenue and safer grants, I reported this to Public Safety Committee earlier this year, or in late twenty twenty-two. But we were awarded a federal grant, five point two million dollars to hire twelve personnel, that's a hundred percent federal funding for three years. That recruit class has already been hired. We completed the bond sale that I spoke about earlier, we went through two recruit classes, so hired tenant and personnel, adopted our twenty twenty-three operating budget, which came in at a two-point-one percent year-over-year increase to taxpayers, so we're able to see that coming that low considering cost of business for us is still going up as well as we're still adding additional personnel. I completed two audits during COVID, the the State Auditor's Office gave us a free pass one year because of good history. Turned out that wasn't actually a good thing trying to do both both audits in in the last fall, so I completed fiscal year twenty and twenty-one audits both clean. Established that equipment replacement reserve that I spoke about earlier, started DEI training for our supervisors. Formed our Pierce County Regional Fire Training Consortium, I'll speak about that later. Sent three battalion chiefs to the UW Foster School of Business Leadership Academy. Deployed our behavioral health specialist Monday through Friday, so before before the spring of twenty twenty-two, we did have one employee known as a community resource paramedic. He was handling low, low acuity nine-one-one issues or users nine-one-one, basically the social work side of the fire department. So we added another employee into that, who actually licensed as a social worker, entitled as a behavioral health specialist. That team grew by by doubled in size from one to two. Had five employees who we sent through paramedic school, that's a year-long commitment on their behalf, they go, they are pulled off the line, full-time in school for that whole year. We helped out with the regional, the Har Drill, the largest in U.S. history, and I like to say that because I think it's definitely Har Drill in U.S. history. Sounds cool to say that it's the largest, so. We kicked off our life safety inspections of businesses in the last year and a half or so, and so in twenty twenty-two, that completed over twenty-five millions per feet of business base infected for life safety issues. All of our community engagement efforts are now back to normal for the first time really as of this spring and over the fall, so all our easter egg on standard runs. Pancake meetings, all the things that you see up on the screen, so very excited to see being able to engage with the public again, have our open house that went dormant for a couple of years. As far as fire stations go, we acquired our final piece of property we needed for phase one projects, and that's out in Prairie Ridge. Throw ground across the street on Station one eleven and fourteen on Lake Taps, we have to bid in the fall of last year. As far as equipment goes, we placed a new fire boat in service on Lake Taps. We received three new medic units, so in Bonnie Lake, you'll see a shiny new medic unit going down the road, now it's been in service for a couple of months. As well as we placed orders back in the fall for additional three new medic units and a couple of new fire engines. I point that out just because what we're seeing, I'm sure you're seeing from staff and trying to hold the vehicles now is becoming increasingly difficult. Medic units, we're still lucky, used to be able to get stuff through all three of the commercial vendor, the mainstream American vendors, I guess, if you want to say that way, with Ford Chevy Dodge. Ford and Chevy have shut down their commercial lines over the last couple of years, so it's becoming very difficult across the U.S. to get the vehicle to actually hold the medic unit box unpacks. We've been fortunate to get ahold of the Dodge in the meantime. But then the two engines, so a fire engine is a complete one-hundred percent custom-built piece of equipment, typically takes a year from the time you order it to receive it. Those two engines were placed, the performance bond came back and said they'll have them in four years. Well, with that being the case, then we decided to order two more as of last month, that are twenty twenty-six replacements, and we hope that we get those turn around time right now on fire engines. Is that, they're on, so we're doing what we can in the meantime to keep the fleet in service, luckily we have our frontline. As far as where we're headed in twenty twenty-three, like I said, we hired that safer grant class of twelve, they started the academy back in February, and they'll hit the street in August, so look out. We've got a second recruitment underway right now for the fall, that says a class of ten, but since I put the slideshow together about a month ago, that's actually crept up to thirteen, just because of some unforeseen retirements. Organizational pushes that we have going on, I mentioned the standard to cover and that that was complete, and that's led us on to some deployment overhaul with South Sound nine-one-one. Our station up in Edgewood, one eighteen, is due to open here in the next month. Then by the end of the summer and into early fall, we're going to start staffing our station in Milton. The safer recruit class is really focused on staffing the Tohale Station, and so I I point those out because it always doesn't seem very exciting to come talk to Bonnie Lake about stations in Milton to Tohale. But the way the the way that our system works, we're one regional system, and so as that crew that's in Edgewood right now goes to handle that call that happens in Milton, the crew from Sumner goes up to Edgewood for their call, and then the crew from Bonnie Lake goes down to Sumner to handle their call, and so on and so forth. The same thing happens out into Tohale as well. The medic unit that's based out of Bonnie Lake, over half of its calls are outside of Bonnie Lake, and it's the busiest unit. So as we add additionally units even outside of the city, what it will result in is having your units in the city more regularly and more reliable. So it does have a downstream impact that you'll see in in data over the next couple of years. We also deployed a medical services officer, so our current shift supervisor is a battalion chief who oversees the entire shift, but we added another supervisor on shift twenty-four seven, known as medical supervisor, our medical services officer focuses on the supervision and deployment of our EMS personnel. And then last item on there is the formation of the Pierce County Fire Training Consortium, so you'll see there's five organizations on there, RAM, Central Pierce, West Pierce, Ordin, and East Pierce. So together, we took all of our training divisions, who were all doing the exact same thing, and put them into one built, so they can together as one big group, so now that's a group of twenty training officers working together, delivering training to over seven hundred and sixty firefighters, so our training division is now out of Central Pierce Fire Station. As far as how to keep up with what's going on, you should see these things show up in your mailbox every once in a while, that we send out a newsletter quarterly. We did a complete overhaul of our website, if you get a chance to take a look, it came out incredible. That was done back in the fall, so we keep all of our information up to date there, as well as all of our core documents. As far as keeping up with us, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, we're very active on all of those to engage with community and update folks on what's going on. And then what's happening out day to day, I'm sure you're all very aware that you have Code Red, outstanding purchase, I'm very happy with that. The thing on the right, PC Alert, not so happy with most of the time, but Pulse Point, if you're not familiar with what that is, that's an app that you can download onto your phone. You can track all of the incidents twenty-four seven, it doesn't get into specifics of addresses, but it will get you within a vault with a good understanding of what the ballpark incident is based on, when your sirens go by and you open that app. It'll keep you up to date with what units are coming, if they're in route or if you're on scene. And that is all I have, so that's as quick as I can get through that, but kind of a mouthful, are there any questions I can?
I look like it. Thank you very much, Chief, appreciate it.
For having me, Chief. Your team does an amazing job, by the way.
All right, we will move on to our second presentation, planning and building supervisor, Jason Sullivan, you have the floor, sir.
So I'm going to do a quick present, I'm going to do a quick introduction, and then I'm going to turn it over to Scott, who is our consultant on this. All right, so when we did the contracts for the Allen, for this parks, frecks, and trails, open space plan, one of the things the council asked us to do was to kind of break off Allen York Park because there was lots of problems occurring out there, lots of operational issues, and come earlier in the process with some options for the council to consider. We're not asking for any vote. Recommendation tonight is simply a briefing of where we're at, some concepts to get the council's kind of feedback on as we continue to explore these concepts with the public through over the summer, through different open houses. The final kind of design will come back in the fall, that's when we'll ask the council to make any recommendations. So tonight, really not looking at whether or not we have the budget for it, whether or not it's the right idea, but what ways we're looking at trying to solve the problems out there and our thought process behind those, and see kind of where council has some questions with that. So I'll turn it over to Scott, he's with IMXM Architecture, who's a kind of the lead on this side of the project, so with that, Scott, I'll turn it over to you, and him or I are going to tag, tag, tag.
Yeah, that's great. All right, thanks so much, Jason. I wonder, with the keyboard, is it possible to zoom in just a little bit on there or not? Really?
Roll mouse wheel up.
And that'll do the trick, sure, okay. So so thank you again for for having me this evening, and thank you, Jason, for the introduction. It's good to be back here, this is my second time, if you will. And so as Jason was outlining there, you know, you all have a lot in the works as far as parks and trails and open space planning more generally, system-wide, and then also looking at specific sites that are really of critical importance, most especially on your park. And so what we'll be sharing with you today are some options for general strategies of how we approach the design and improvements made to that park. In large part to make sure that we are on track with kind of scoping this appropriately, that we're as ambitious or as, you know, somewhat more modest and practical as you think is fitting for this particular place in this particular time. Because and we know that it's a really special opportunity to really look to the future and decide on what you want this place to be, or the city of Bonnie Lake. Cause and we know that it's a really special opportunity to, um, really look to the future and decide on what you want this place to be for the city of Bonnie Lake on into the future. So let's, let's go through some of this. So, uh, uh, just as a reminder, um, as Jason described, this is a process where I'm not here today to show you a funnel designed to, you know, run through the budget. But instead, um, here giving you an update essentially. Um, last year we kicked things off with a visit out on site. Um, got great feedback from the chief, from staff, from others, um, on what are some key issues out at this place. That feedback was translated into some very preliminary kind of options against looking at what, how we might take on the improvements to the, uh, this park. Right now we're in the process of reviewing these more general design options. So we shared, uh, this with the planning commission, uh, just a few weeks ago. Um, I'm here today and then the idea is that in the summer, we'll be able to show more specifics to the community and get key community feedback. Um, of course, in parallel, there's a survey that's out still live right now, um, that, uh, we'll be getting feedback just in a, or it may have just ended, but we'll be getting feedback in a few days on. What we're hearing from the community as far as what, uh, their more general interests are, where they're seeing there's a real, um, lack of resources available in the park. And then finally, this is intended to all lead to what's a preferred concept plan. So that'll be presented back to you all in the fall, just as Jason described. So, uh, we've already heard some really, uh, feedback from different groups. Uh, right at the kickoff, uh, we of course were made aware of, you know, the issues that you all have seen, especially in the summer out there at Allen York Park. You know, the issue of managing congestion, knowing that there ought to be improved access, improved access in more ways than one, uh, as far as to different resources, especially the waterfront there and, um, and, and the boat launch. Knowing that, um, some of the facilities out there are just in some ways, just from a different era of the city. And that it's time is right for upgrading those facilities, uh, be that the boat launch itself, potentially concession stand. And now knowing how much you really rely on storage out there. Um, wanting to be mindful of minimizing maintenance, uh, demands on into the future. Um, looking on the one hand at what might be some low hanging fruit as far as immediate improvements, but then also recognizing that this really could be the time to develop more of a 20 year vision for Allen York Park. How this is a place where there's a public gathering spaces and it's home to, uh, an even better home for many community events. We, uh, not so much for Allen Park specifically, but as part of that, uh, more general community outreach, we've heard from groups like the sports stakeholder group, um, where we've heard, of course, that, you know, there's, uh, 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 the demand of, of sports fields is increasing, the membership is increasing. And of course that's across really the real diversity of sports and activities. Um, there's a consistent message of, of that being increasing participation over time. And it's really, they see themselves as being facility constrained, that if they had more facilities, it could increase membership. With regards to Allen York Park, you know, of course the ball fields out there, uh, well, there's the new ball fields just opening up, which are incredible resource. Uh, but then the existing ball fields, we got really valuable input regarding how, um, on the one hand, existing fields there could be upgraded and be more useful for wider range of ages. Or in fact, um, uh, if there's a more consolidated location with facilities, that that would kind of avoid this, this log jam of summer boat trailer usage and sports usage. And, um, and they could, uh, the folks that we were talking about saw that as a real benefit. Overall, the real theme of the, kind of this conversation was that, you know, folks are, they really care about their park spaces and their sports facilities. They got membership, they got, they got people who are ready to shovel, ready to level dirt, do the rest. And there's this great quote, um, uh, saying, you know, we're ready to do stuff, we just need to plan. And I think that's, that can apply to our, a lot of our lives. Uh, okay, so then, uh, as far as planning commission, who we presented to a few weeks ago, um, their feedback, they talked about how there's interest in addressing the current operational issues of large turnaround. There is not interfere with the road traffic, essentially avoiding that issue of folks backing up into the roadway. Um, direct connection between the queuing area and parking, access, uh, control to the boat ramp, of course. And then looking at that connectivity and usability of the park itself, how of course there's this interest in relieving the overcrowding at the lakefront where right now it's so constrained. And we'll look at it in more detail in a moment. And then also, um, making, uh, more, uh, providing more accessible play areas for younger children, knowing that the, the lake itself, you know, there's limitations, especially with the cold temperatures. And then, you know, a side benefit of some of these schemes would be to actually have less through traffic of folks just skirting around the lake to, to make their way, uh, north or south. Uh, we included, uh, some of these historic areas, which, you know, at, at this size on the, on the big screen, you know, look, look all pretty consistent. But, you know, if you were looking on your own screens, you'll, you'll be able to notice that these are new changes, you know? And across the years, across 15 years, what we see is that, okay, the bones of Allen York Park have remained the same. Uh, but it's usage, especially as far as things of, of that waterfront access and traffic and parking have all shifted. And to my mind, something that's somewhat useful, it just remembers that these kind of places are, they're living places. They're, they're always changing one way or another. And really what we're talking about now is a chance to plan on into the future. Um, and so, um, so, you know, most especially where I'm sure many of you all remember when you were able to, to line up right along the lake there for the launch. Okay, so this slide, what we're doing is we're looking at the, uh, uh, providing kind of a summary statement for how that boat launch is being currently used and what that trailer parking capacity is. Cause of course both of those pieces are somewhat moving targets, um, especially over the last few years with different restrictions that, that, um, that we've had with the pandemic. Um, as far as kind of what we might expect as far as the usage of a, of a resource like a boat launch. You know, American Planning Association, uh, uh, produced a study some years ago, but looked to see, uh, active boat launch, how they get used. And really they assume up to maybe 75 boats per day. Um, that's really a kind of peak usage, which in, in that particular study, they're looking at the three busiest days of, of the year. What's that number of launches? If they took the next five busiest days and then averaged those out, they're seeing more like 50 boats. Um, in 2019, you know, uh, it was great that we were able to be given access to some of that kiosk, uh, log data. Um, we saw that there were 56 state passes sold on the busiest day of the busiest week. And so then, you know, on the second busiest day of the busiest week, if that drops pretty significantly and on downward. Um, and as you all know, the day pass kiosk was not in operation for a couple of years.
That doesn't include people who buy the seasonal pass of city residents, right? Just people that utilize a kiosk?
Exactly.
Yeah, there was no way, because of the way the pass works, they don't swipe anything. So there was no way to know. How many seasonal pass holders were also launching a day because there was just no way to fly.
Yeah, and so to, nice enough to provide the number for the annual passes that were sold. It gives us a frame of reference there that 115 were sold, for example, in 2020 and 141 in 2021. Uh, but then that kind of cycle of, of bad usage, we don't have data on. And then of course, so we're thinking of that's, uh, uh, depending on your perspective, either the supply side or the demand side, the other side is the, the parking. And, um, and so, uh, uh, for 2023, um, there's the temporary condition of there being now 26 trailer parking stalls, according to our count. Um, that will be provided there over near ball field four. Uh, but then looking at the plans that you all have already approved, uh, which, which you approved, uh, within the process of us working on this. Uh, you'll, you'll be providing 60 or so trailer stalls there. But that, that gives you some kind of frame of reference for those, those capacity and usage numbers. We also asked to look to at, um, at the beachfront itself, at the lake shore. And, uh, I apologize that the contrast is a little bit low here on screen. And for this sort of, uh, 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 condition, uh, you know, it can all get a bit academic of, find academic papers of folks trying to estimate how many square feet you need per person for, uh, for a beach, for a park, et cetera. We took a look at studies that, um, we're looking in particular at beach fronts and, um, and long story short, what we could see is the, the kind of limit that you most recently settled on where, um, where it's about that 350 people, uh, limited in 2022, which our understanding is that worked relatively well. That's certainly in line with honestly what we would expect if we were looking at this in a, you know, not knowing any better. And really what, what is the main constraint and you all feel it in your use of the site is that this is such a narrow strip of land. And so it's interesting when we look at these studies for, um, uh, uh, there's a mention there at the top of, uh, of a study where, uh, uh, the National Recreation Association. They got feedback from folks who manage public beaches and said like, what do you see as the optimal kind of depth of beachfront? And, and they said, well, really it's about 150, 160 feet, which makes good sense because you have these different zones and layers for getting into the water, for lying out, for people being able to walk, et cetera. And of course, as you see described there in this image, you know, that idealized edge is way back from what is the actual edge. And so, um, so it's just such a constrained kind of condition. And of course you add to that, um, the danger of, uh, uh, West Lake Taps. And you have also then the need for controlled access and it's, uh, very, very challenging. So, um, that's a bit of background of kind of the, our overall goals for this project, for our involvement here in this effort. Some of the discussions that have been taking place so far, our understanding of some of those constraints as far as the, the usage and the overcrowding and kind of conflict that has been described. What we'd like to do now is share with you essentially three, three, uh, strategy, different strategies that kind of amp up and scope and ambition for how we can clear the decks to allow Allen York Park to be, um, you know, uh, the best place it can be for, um, for the city. So when we're talking about Allen York Park, you know, it's something of a moving target really because, um, we have the, the existing official boundaries. We then have the, uh, effective additions happening to the Northwest potentially that will for sure be integrated into our thinking when we develop more specific, uh, uh, design proposals. But for today's discussion, we're really focusing in on the heart here and wanting to explore the, the possibilities of what the relationship is between the park and the lake and, um, and the road. So these three options, we thought it'd be useful to think of them as, you know, uh, kind of a dial that's being turned from min, a minimum to a medium to kind of more maximal, uh, uh, sets of options. And we'll walk through these, um, fairly quickly. So in this, this mid option, the thinking is, well, uh, let's see what we can do if we really just build off of the existing infrastructure, the existing circulation and just make enhancements to improve people's lives and to improve essentially, uh, just the basic functionality of this place. And so what you see there are ideas for, of course, there's a possibility of improved crossing, um, there's a, there's improved access points. And then for the boat launch in particular, one main improvement is to go ahead and make use of that, that parking that's along at the northern edge of, uh, of the image here and have that be a queuing area. Um, that in conjunction with, um, what you've already approved for some of the parking. And then maybe we toss in an upgrade to the concession stand and some other kind of improvements there and it could make some kind of impact.
I, I had a question.
Yeah.
Um, so in regards to kind of this purple dotted line here that's then moving into the boat launcher saying, um, basically where the existing parking is making some sort of queue up lane somewhere in that area as well.
Yeah, that's the thinking on this one.
Okay, okay.
Is, is that north of that parking lot, isn't that like that shoulder?
Yeah, you know, in, in.
I think they used to use that for.
I think this is actually in the parking lot, in that back of the block. This is actually in the parking lot.
That would make it difficult for people trying to leave, right?
We're, we're, that's what they were trying.
It would be, they would reconfigure. Yeah, they wouldn't just add like people going on a sign there.
Yeah, and, and, you know, it's, it's a very, uh, I, in an earlier version's presentation, there was a slide that essentially said, this is hard, you know? Where we had, you know, all of our doodles and things like that. And then I think part of what's so challenging about it is that there's, there's so many different variables. And so in a way, like with this scheme, you know, right now we're not showing what would then be the consequences for all the other parking. If the, if the existing ball fields will remain in place, et cetera. And, uh, and I think essentially there'd be options for that, um, especially in consideration of the current maintenance facilities that can be made use of parking. But for now, we're trying to think of like this kind of core critical issue of just the, the challenges of the boat launch, how we approach it, yeah.
How much, um, would it cost if we were to put like a walking bridge over West Taps so that the kiddos could, you know, just like a ramp?
We haven't gotten into costing, but we could, I guess in this option, since this has improved waterfront, uh, what we can do is add that when we come back, um, we give you a cost. Yes, we haven't, we haven't delved into that.
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. So, so in a way with this scheme, kind of thinking of it as kind of this more pragmatic, uh, kind of scheme. The thing is that maybe at the very least that crossing, you know, maybe it's a raised crosswalk and there's kind of bulb out and it's traffic calming, those kind of measures. Um, if we're having something like a pedestrian bridge, you know, honestly, I don't know that we really have room for it to kind of land all the way back down, uh, because the beachfront is so small.
Okay, and you'd have to provide an elevator.
Yeah.
Cause the, cause it would have to be ADA accessible.
Even if it's a ramp without stairs?
Um, I don't think we would have the space to do that.
Okay, yeah. Oh, yeah, it has, you'd have to have the incline and then have to go way up, right?
Have to get four, two feet in the air.
We're not going to do it like directly into the lake, you know, you're just going to slide right into.
Rough topic, but how did we do the ADA, how did we do the stairs, Victor Falls, at Ancheline without her?
I, there was a lot of things that happened that I couldn't answer.
Yeah, I mean, we just did that two years ago without an elevator, so I just.
When you come, when it comes to trail facilities, there's some.
Options.
They're all the, all the ones that come up the hill.
Yeah.
The ADA access is down to, um, um, Old Southern Buckley Highway and then around on the sidewalk.
Okay, that's, oh, three more miles.
Yeah, because there's no way to do it. And so that was, that, that was how we were able to show that it wasn't, that it worked. We have an ADA route and a non ADA route.
In, in my high school, when I was there, they built something like what you're talking about. But what they allowed was, um, still ADA access to cross the street.
Yeah, exactly.
While pedestrians.
Going to head with that.
Ambulatory pedestrians could go up and over.
That may be an option, too. Well, we could explore that, I guess. We'll add that to our list of things to explore.
Yeah, for sure. And we love crossing. Uh, so, okay, so here, this is just a way of kind of restating some of those highlights that, that I mentioned. So really fairly modest improvements, but they can add up to, uh, to something that's a better condition than what we see now. In this medium option, what we start to look at are ways of, at the very least, kind of relieving pressure, especially on the core pinch point of the, the stretch of the lakefront. But then also looking to see how we reroute some of that queuing area for the boat launch. Um, frankly, still not ideal, but, um, but if we, the way we imagine one, this would of course be a huge improvement. And so what you see here is that, uh, West Lake Taps is, is being pulled in and we're, we're highlighting a target that, um, that is somewhat arbitrary. I mean, that could shift one way or another, doesn't have to be on center with the development to the north. Um, but what we're doing is we're giving ourselves some, some land here so that now rather than that waterfront piece being just, you know, like the, the perched turf that is there, that of course is the real destination. And just squeezing in a little bit of walkway that stays along the fence, now there could be room to breathe, you know, the place, people can sit out, maybe this concession stand jumps over to that side. Um, and, um, and I didn't mention on the previous scheme, there's been a talk, uh, we heard from, when we were visiting that onsite from a mother with her child saying, you know, I'd love to have a splash pad for my young child. He's not old enough to go into the lake on a hot summer day. We could locate that really almost anywhere we wanted to, again, to relieve that pressure, uh, or something along those lines.
My little kid loves.
Yeah, we're, we're lucky enough to be.
They will have their own car before this happens. Let's be real. These kids are a decade from being born, that'll.
So.
My grandkids.
So, okay, so, uh, so that formalization of the existing boat trailer circulation and parking, um, new facilities and programming, you know, programming is the word we use for just supportive activities in existing snack shack parking area and main yard. Um, and then of course, within this scheme, we have enough room that one way or another, probably the nature of how this main space to the left is used probably shifts. For example, maybe, uh, the, a performance. For example, maybe, uh, the, a performance stage or, or something that's even better suited for, um, your activities is built out, out there. All right, so here we.
I have a question. So, um, in your, uh, queue up lane here.
Yeah.
Uh, would it be a fairly, um, just idea wise, will it be a fairly clear lane, I guess? Where people are very aware that this is not.
I think it would in essence be a shoulder that's, that's, uh, that's marked as the light, yeah. For the boat, yeah.
So, um, adding more park area and waterfront access, we're going to need to take off, shave off a portion of that to add more parking.
Yeah.
With a bigger park, we're gonna need more parking, so.
So, so we definitely have shots on that and Jason, go for it.
The, the, it's not shown here because we're still trying to figure out exactly, but the thought would be that as we use up more Allen York Park proper by the water for recreational uses, that the parking starts shifting to the old city hall site and the old maintenance charts. How that gets laid out, which is why we haven't shown it, but that's the, in all these concepts, the idea is that that becomes your parking source and the area closest to the water becomes more for recreational use, not the storage of vehicles. At least conceptually.
And then I do have a crazy question, so can we take, I like the roundabout because I was trying in my head to figure out what we're gonna do with Bonnie Lake Avenue and how we're going to get them into the tunnel.
Yeah.
So can we literally put a tunnel under there that would just, then you can have that whole entire area? You know, I know in Seattle, we have a convention center that we drive under every single, and that's a pretty darn heavy building and it's scary to drive under that.
If, if I, I just want to jump in there because I, I, I don't, I don't want to shoot anything down too early. All ideas are on the table, but there's no way we're gonna be able to facilitate a tunnel in this location. It's gonna be too costly to do. It's going to, instead of we're 10 years out from kids being born that are gonna enjoy this park, we've just gone to 30 or 40. The cost to facilitate a tunnel, especially in a more residential area such as this would be, um, high, very high. See, I appreciate the ideas and everything being on the table, but I, I do want to make sure that we stick to, to what we really believe is, is something that's feasible and realistic.
If I recall, there were, the pedestrian tunnel that we had planned at Fennel Creek was over $3 million, right? That's why we scrapped that for just the tangeline workaround on.
Yeah, I, I think like about 10 years ago, when we were looking at that, I think it was like three and a half, $4 million to bore under 410. And that's a bore. Here is an open dig, you'd have to reconfigure that housing development. It, it, it's good to plan and reach for big plans, but you also have to like stay within that kind of weird realm of possibility.
Okay, I get it.
I have a quick question on queue up. How in this diagram would they queue up coming from the, the west on Bonnie Lake Boulevard or from the north on West Taps? Is there gonna be a turnaround down at the, the south part of that?
Fair question. I mean, if, 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 if this were followed and no other improvements were made, then it'd be quite a long route to get yourself in, in line. So, fair question.
Well, it's not the preferred alternative.
What's that?
That's why it's not the preferred alternative.
That, that's also true. I was going to say the question of the tunnel really gives up to make the max option feel very reasonable.
Here we go, this is the, uh, the round that I'm for.
So here in this option, you know, the idea is really to, as much as possible within the boundaries of the park to essentially kind of clear the way and separate out that vehicular circulation from the core use of the park. Uh, and, 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 and reroute West Lake Taps so that it's really running around along the perimeter of, uh, of the current park space, um, that's not forested and then goes back up to meet Bonnie Lake. So, uh, and then in this option, really as you see there and as the, the, the title they're suggesting, you know, we have all kinds of options for what gets configured and how that core now, you know, really relatively huge contiguous space of the park gets used. Um, here you see some suggestions there, well, most importantly, um, you know, because we are truly in the max option. Um, with, within this scheme, we, we received great feedback of considering, well, go ahead and have that boat launch be on access with Bonnie Lake and, and let that be an improved and new facility. Maybe the existing, uh, uh, boat launch remains in place and it's used for fishing and the like. And then in this process, uh, perhaps then there's a reconfiguration for, um, the swimming area to be, uh, to be expanded, but also more clearly delineated, more, uh, modern facilities. And then there could be some combination of things like spray park, uh, concession stand, restroom, storage structure, some of that potentially even consolidated. Um, and then of course, then as you see here, that, that clear point of access. Which, um, to the chief's point earlier, you know, in this case, even if you're coming from the north, you still work your way around that roundabout and connect there. Yeah.
The ball fields are gone there, right?
So this one, this one, in this scheme, we're suggesting the ball fields are gone, especially because one way or another, the existing, purely existing ball fields, uh, would, would be, uh, would, would be wiped out. If it, if it was decided as a really high priority, have at least one ball field in the room here. But I, I think that after doing all this work, the nature of this park will be shifted. And you'll want to take real maximum advantage of it. And, and in the conversations we had with folks, you know, from Little League, et cetera, they seem very open to shifting. They, they love Allen York Park, they, they appreciate how beautiful it is, but for having their baseball practice and dealing with traffic and all that, they are okay with making a move.
Yeah, so one, one of the big comments that we got during this boarding roundtable group was that, uh, was that Allen York Park is great, but when it's the middle of the summer, when you're wanting to have baseball practice and everybody else is wanting to go out and recreate on the lake, it is a nightmare getting there. And so it's not the best location for those types of things from that pure perspective. Um, so one of the things that this does do. So one of the things that does do is that, one of the things that we heard clearly, at least from, uh, the chief's side, was the need to have a single point of controlled access for the boat ramp, similar to what has been happening out at the county park. Uh, what this does is it gives you that single point of access, right? So basically that parking lot that's there now basically gets converted into a queuing lane with two lanes of traffic. You drive through it and then the boat launch is, it's all contained in one kind of fenced in area. And so the, the police can shut down that access point without having any vehicles messing up the roadways. Um, so that was one of the big ideas. We do know that the current kind of swim platform is reaching the end of its life. Um, and so this is an opportunity to make sure that if, when, if we replace it, we replace it maybe in a different location that allows for this type of option in the future. The other thing that we talked with the consultant about was along this new West Taps highway, having some sort of angled parking or onsite, online, on-street parking, provide some, you know, quick pickup type parking, some access parking there. And then also with the de-camp facility moving, creating a kind of another parking area down there that can serve the skate park, the tennis courts. Um, it, this just gives you that option of controlling. And also it gives chief the option, if, if the city council wanted to, to completely fence Allen York Park and have controlled access points for the entire park. So that if there was a need for the police to take control of the park, they have control of all the access. So this was to maximize the amount of green space, maximize the beach area and at the same time provide that security overlay, uh, that we're currently lacking.
I'm, I'm impressed. I know a lot of this costs money. I don't even know how you guys reconfigured that, that all just seemed very complicated. Um, what I do like also is just the, the cutoff of the road. And again, I know this is like finances aside, I, I get that, but I do like, I, I hate it that the beach, which is tiny, was separated from like the play park and everything else because I have kids of multiple ages and they're spread all around the park instead of kind of being in one generalized area, so.
And the other thing I think that this helps us with is the other problem of cut through traffic. It doesn't become a straight shot through the park. It, you can still flow through the park for security purposes and emergency management purposes. Um, but on a kind of, I'm doing a cut through, you have to come down, make a right, do a roundabout and then kind of tool down the road. So the hope is that it will cut through, it will cut down on that kind of racing along the beach shore, um, that we're experiencing.
Yeah, and this gives me that tunnel that I was looking for, without the tunnel, right? So the whole road becomes part of the park. And so I do like that. Um, so, uh, again, parking, so you're saying like on the new West Taps highway, they would have like angled parking? Could it be like, instead of all of this green space, maybe on the, the edges all the way around? It would be all car parking, angled parking, is that?
Yeah, that, that's what, we haven't figured out that. And we look at, you know, is it better to make a parking lot or is it better just to make kind of those angled parking stalls?
Yeah.
You have the additional parking in the de-camp facility and then the other thought is also that you'd have parking at the old city hall site and trails that kind of connect back over, um.
But something along those lines. I mean, our sense is that, you know, there's really, uh, two main modes for this park. You know, there's, there's the heat of the summer and then there's all the rest of the year. And, um, and so having some essential parking and access, that's especially for the community during the rest of the year, that's just very immediate. Um, and then also having accessible stalls, of course. Uh, uh, while then also having additional parking, just like Jason described, you know, uh, to the, to the less. It will be more about the overall capacity.
I know.
Yeah.
Integrated.
Yeah, and fishing ramps and reconfigure the fishing docks. Um, and then put the boat ramp straight out and have four ramps there. I mean, that would be amazing. Um, just parking, parking, parking.
I like, I like the controlled access to that idea.
Kelly's got a question.
Yeah, is there any reason why, um, the new road can't go on the backside of the skate park?
Big wetland, lots of money.
Where's the wetland?
Right on the back, right, there's a big wetland right, yeah, where Scott is circling. At the other side of the skate park, there's another big wetland. So we, we trying to, like I said, managing that cost by hugging that tree line, we're staying out of those environmental critical areas. Um, and reducing kind of the cost and impact of the project. And that's why creating that additional parking area there for the people who want to use the, those other facilities, um, is, is nice.
We've been, you know, discussing moving that road for, um, I don't know, 40 years. But we, we're always told it's too expensive and we're always told it's like, it dumps on wetlands or whatever it is, right? So we have some magic that we've found?
Well, I think it, it, it's how, it's not just moving the road. It would be part of the overall strategy. And so I think this does get into trying to avoid those wetlands because like I said, we're going through most of the areas that are already developed. Um, I know a lot of the other proposals, but Councilor McLemus was talking about kind of cutting through that land was. Um, so there are different sources from pedestrian safety, transportation, and I will say now as compared to maybe 20 years ago, there's a lot more focus in grants on pedestrian safety, pedestrian access. Um, you're also looking at grants for increasing boat launch capacity. Um, so it's part and parcel of how we phase the project. And we'd also have to look at how this relates to our transportation plan and whether or not it addresses a capacity issue at that current intersection by providing the roundabout. So you may even have the ability to tap into transportation dollars. So the only way it works is through multiple funding sources, but we're trying, that's why we're trying to pull it all together in one image. And then we'll have to figure out kind of phasing out, I don't know, Ryan, you had anything to, to add?
Yeah, no, it'll be interesting.
I, I, I think, uh, Jason covered it pretty well. I, um, I think that, and I would have to, especially certainly with a lot of the federal funding that's been coming down, uh, through the state to the, uh, cities and counties, uh, I think that we have an awesome story here to tell that would be really appealing to some of the granting agencies. I will say though, that it may take, uh, so with some of these larger efforts, sometimes it takes finding funding sources that are gonna allow you to get, you know, get money over multiple years and kind of pool it together. Um, I, you know, I, I won't try and convince you any different than that, that realigning the road and doing some of that work, yeah, it, it, it's gonna cost some money. But I do think it's doable. I think, I think we've just got to really, you know, work with, with you all to, to find those granting agencies and then really tell our story.
I just, hopefully people do realize that, you know, there's an extraordinary amount of traffic that goes through that area. You know, that is in a significant route area, so, and you'll, that'll be exposed when we do the studies and stuff like that. So don't, don't be thinking that, you know, there's only five cars that go through that area.
No, no.
Because the last time I looked, there's literally, I kid you not, 16,000 trips through that intersection a day.
Knowing that that was gonna be an issue, we actually have sheik Arduo under contract.
Yeah.
To actually kind of start looking at this from a transportation modeling. Um, they did tra, transportation counts in March and then they're gonna go back out this summer and do counts again so that we can kind of peer, compare peak season to non-peak season. Uh, and they'll be on the hook as we refine the plans with Scott, um, to do that traffic modeling. So Scott, do you have anything to add? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to monopolize the conversation.
Oh, no, that, that's fair.
So, is there any reason we can't fill the lake into that dotted line? Move the swimming area all the way out to create the green space?
That would, I think that goes into the tunnel ideal. Um, because one, you're filling in the lake, which is dropping the capacity of water retention that Cascade Water Alliance would have, so they would be losing storage capacity. Um, you'd have a significant federal permitting effort. Um, and I don't know if the, the Department of Ecology and, and the regulatory agencies would want us filling in a lake, well alone Cascade Water Alliance, who's actually the property owner.
That's always good, that's interesting. And then do keep in mind, obviously, you mentioned the federal, sorry for jumping in, but it, you know, that is a dyke. And, and it isn't our property. So you identified very correctly that, yeah, when you go futzing around with that area, there's a bunch of other, you know, there's, there's a corps of engineers.
Yeah, you'd have to be, you'd be getting basically, you'd be building a dam.
Exactly, yeah.
Obviously, this would be a phased project and it would be over time. Um, I met fairly recently with Representative Robertson and we were talking about several different funding options for different things. Uh, but one of the things he brought up was phasing that stuff because essentially you get the hook in and then the state's like, okay, yeah, we want to finish, right? So doing several phases, uh, seems to work pretty well. I'll just throw it out there.
Question for Ryan, uh, if we just took that ball field out, used our new one, are you eliminating, you see what we have right now? Do you have more than one group using our, our current ball field, Allen York Park in the middle out there?
I believe those fields are predominantly used by Bonnie Lake Little League, but there are, there are other developing situations. I know Deputy Mayor is, is working on some things that would maybe provide some relief for potentially losing those grass fields there.
If we took it out entirely, we could still exist without ball fields in Midtown Park or something like that.
I, I think that there's a path forward there, yes.
Hopefully you add him someplace else before you minus him over here.
That's what he's working on right now. I'm working on it. I've read the conversation, yeah.
Councilor Fullerton, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, that was, that was actually my question was, can we put at least one ball field in there? But, um, are we gonna make that concerts or, you know, all the way back by the new West Take Taps? Or is that just gonna be like all picnics? If, if we're gonna make that like all picnic area and just like green area, then maybe we could make the concession stand bigger. Or we could allow for, um, the food trucks to come in. And then they could be out there every single day in the summer making money, ice cream trucks and all that.
Yeah, go to DC, they love food trucks.
Yeah, so if we're gonna, you know, I know for me, when I go to the park, I want food. I want to eat and I want to play and so that would be fun.
But I think in, in some ways, uh, everything that you're driving there and asking there is really the next. Um, and so if it feels like, uh, you know, this isn't a moment to make a fixed decision, but, you know, what I'm hearing is that there's interest in at least continuing to test these waters of what's really possible. We're fortunate that this is being done in parallel with this larger outreach to the community of hearing what they're interested in system, kind of park system wide. And so we'll be looking also at kind of what are those specific. And so we'll be looking also at kind of what are those facility resources are across the city, and that will, I'm sure, give us insight into what might be a good match here at Allen York Park, and then we'll go back to the community this summer, hear directly from them, and they can mark up plans and give us ideas, and we'll integrate that that in.
How much of this is false hope, though? I mean, we're test-driving Ferraris right now. What, I mean, realistically?
Well, I I think it came back to what I what I was saying before, you know, taking out the spray park, the concession stand, right? The big green field really isn't that expensive. The expensive part is the roadway.
Right, yeah.
Right? Um, I don't have a dollar estimate on that roadway, but I will say we just spent how much on that one ball field?
Four?
Six, seven million dollars? That gets a lot of this roadway. So it's it's not necessarily...
Marking this down?
Uh, I I I'm just saying, I'm not saying it's the total cost, but it...
Yeah, yeah, I I I think I think the bigger point here is that it's false hope to think that we can continue to operate the park as it is.
No, I I completely agree. This is, I I love it, I think this is the way to go, but I mean...
I think I think taking a look at at what we finally do settle on, we will come to that point here at some point, and then taking a really hard look at how we break it into manageable phases that will take some time to complete, I think it's going to take commitment over the long term by by the council, by staff, to execute this in a way that makes sense, that keeps costs reasonable over time, uh, so that we can finally attain the goal. This this won't be, obviously, you're exactly right, this won't all be done in one year. We've already, you've done a great job already highlighting what the numbers are, the way the numbers are now and the, you know, incoming revenues. Um, there will be things to consider as we move forward where that's concerned, but I think every single bit of this is doable. What's our, what's our tolerance? What's our commitment level?
I I would also just say that, um, with a plan, hey, this is what, how we want to move forward, then it might be time to look back at your BNO tax as a possibility because, hey, now we actually have a plan, we're working towards something, um, so maybe there's a funding source there.
Is this, or at least a little one? Sorry to follow up, is there, is there bonding funding outside of parks being that this is a road?
I I believe so, haven't gone down that path too far. That was actually just the question the chief was asking me as well. I think there's opportunity for bonding. I don't know exactly what that looks like yet, but I I believe so, yeah.
It seems more realistic if it, if we are using the road transportation side of things rather than the parks budget. That may be more realistic.
Well, also keeping in mind that there actually is, um, car access, um, back behind the stage already that kind of connects up to the, you have two entrance points, you can come in from Bonnie Lake Boulevard, and then you can also exit out near the concession stand. So there really is kind of access already there to drive around those parks. Um, but, you know, we also, I think it would be fairly easy to get funding because we know how the state likes roundabouts.
Yes, roundabouts.
Roundy rounds. So, um, I and I I feel like, you know, short of just what's going to be the most expensive part probably would be remodeling the boat launch, but that kind of needs to be updated anyway. And then, you know, really, the road's not going to have to be dug out too far because, like I said, you know, we already have kind of an access road back there, so we'd just be widening it. Um, this looks really doable and not quite as expensive because we're not adding any more playing fields, we're not, uh, we're going to have the sprinkle park that, or spray park, that might be some some expenses, but I think it would be, uh, very worthwhile for the for the people who like to go to the park. And then safety issue, this is key for safety, and then having the new relocated swimming docks. I I I just think it's beautiful. I, um, this would be something that I would be willing to figure out how we could fund anything like this.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Um, I I just wanted to kind of comment, piggyback on what you said and then what you then said next, um, is just agreeing with, uh, Deputy Mayor Carter in regards to maybe revisiting the thoughts now that maybe something might be, um, in place. My questions are, as a part of this, um, consultation, is, will there be a proposed phased plan then?
Yeah, I think as we bring back the the final plan, we'll have to come up with a phasing approach, um, just kind of, yeah, we'll have to come up with that phasing approach. I will say that road probably becomes the first phase.
Yeah.
Because really, nothing happens until that happens, but, um, we'll definitely come up with a phased approach, we'll be coming up with budgets. This will also get folded into our park impact fee study. Um, and so we'll be looking at the financials and, you know, having that conversation as maybe Deputy Mayor Carter wants, if we want to include that BNO tax component as part of that. We can then begin to present a a a plan, um, and we're, we've, we're already talking about strategies for Midtown Park and some other facilities, so trying to kind of bring this thing into kind of a singular, a singular reality.
So, sorry, more thoughts on that? Um, so will the city then be, um, as you guys are, you know, phasing out the plan and looking at some of these options, uh, for example, like looking at a new spray park being there, um, if that were an option, will you be just creating a plan based on just how, what the finances would look like? Or will will the city, or do we need to be looking for alternative options such as like what happened down at, um, in downtown Puyallup at Pioneer Park, you know, where their their spray park was, um, yeah, it was...
I don't, I don't think, I think all options are on the table.
Okay.
I think what's going to happen is we're going to come up with, now that we know the council's really liking this approach, that they see the positives of it, um, but maybe we don't know the cost, is the next step is to then start to dial in those costs, and then you, the council will be able to make those informed decisions. Because right now, it may, we may not have to do that, we may need to do it, it may be nice, we don't have that answer yet. That's kind of the next step of that. Once we kind of got a dialed-in plan that we can get cost estimates of, we'll be able to come back and have that conversation.
Okay, I have one last question. Um, with the, and me, and correct me if I'm wrong, I may have this, um, so I know, I am aware of the ball field that is behind kind of the, you know, temporary parking lot, if you will, and then what would be then covered over if, you know, if we were to continue this over? Um, and I know that there will be a loss of those fields and that there are, um, organizations that use that currently, but but didn't we just, didn't we just...
Yeah, yeah. We added one.
Just the one?
Just the one, but...
Okay, so one is going to be displaced if we're being technical?
Uh, no. We added one minus four.
Okay, so there is going to be a deficit of fields?
Potentially, but you got to remember, this is just the Allen York portion of the entirety of our parks, which Midtown could offset some of those.
Oh, yeah, you know...
Or or another property. Yeah, oh, yeah, or another property.
Okay, okay.
You you know, of interest, of course, if we're trying to figure out, because in the end with the financing plan and how the, how that works out, because I know that, you know, Terry and stuff and Deputy Mayor is working on some stuff, it sounds pretty exciting with some other organizations, you know, so it'll be interesting to see how that all plays out because, you know, it, Councilmember Clemens will love it if we bring up a Parks District once again, right? You know, because that's, to me, I don't know why, you know, what you're working on, Terry, is is perfect for a Parks District concept. You know, that organization, because of what I understand of it, you know, and taking all of the parks in the area and being able to actually have a financing mechanism and everything and do that with other pieces of land that we own, that we, and, you know, because I I don't know how you get the finance, if, what it looks like, and that'll be the interesting part, right? The BNO is not going to pay for all of this.
Right.
Parks Impact Fee probably wouldn't pay for it for 20 years or something, but, um, Councilman Evans probably has a better, you know, because that that that's an interesting path to me, you know, that's, instead of having Tacoma Parks District, you had, you also add, you know, a Plateau Parks District or whatever and have that whole thing, but so, don't, don't ignore that option if you're thinking out loud, because, you know, there's no reason that we have to dink around with little tiny pieces of things when there's larger organizations that want to do the whole thing.
Any further questions from council? Go ahead, Councilmember Clemens.
Since we talked about park districts.
You know, and I'm not talking about one that's like Bonnie Lake.
Well, no, so that's exactly where I was going.
Talking about a regional one.
The, if if there was a Plateau Parks District that would conserve, you know, the Holly and, you know...
Exactly.
The Plateau, right? That makes complete sense, um, right? And that that would isolate a lot of the objections that were with the, the idea of creating another government entity that matched the city, the city boundary, was just a taxing authority, right?
Exactly. Yeah.
I I I, as the consultant, my extent. Scott, do you have anything kind of closing thoughts from kind of the consultant side or MXM?
No, I mean, it's just, it's pretty weird to be here and be able to listen in on your own discussion and hear what are, of course, all these relevant and, um, important issues. Uh, I think that, as Jason described there, absolutely anything as ambitious as this, you know, we know it has to be based in place, but we also know that it's incredibly valuable to to describe clearly what the ultimate vision is. And so that will be working again in parallel this summer, is we'll be helping flesh out what that overall vision might be or what you saw in the earlier slide of that, that larger set of boundaries within, uh, uh, those yellow line. And then we'll be feeling that piece by piece, see what the layering might be or the phasing, and then what that potentially adds up to as funding sources then.
Go ahead. So while you're polling the public, is it reasonable to ask the public if they'd be willing to support a bond to pay for that street? I I wasn't quite sure of the answer to that.
That's a good question, I don't know. Are you, you're going to be surveying the public this summer?
Yeah, that's right.
So, is that...
I mean, I guess we could get into some questions during the table and exercises on on bonding and funding sources.
That'd be helpful. All right, any further questions?
Good job.
All right, thank you for your work on this, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right, uh, there's no full council issues, no executive session, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Got fixed yet?
Yes, actually, because I know him. He shipped me in on Monday mornings.
Really?
And he's there a month out, he's a tom 24.
I thought you were going to be...